Okay, call a meeting to order Buster.
Yes, this meeting of the Mayor and Board of Alderman for the City of Cleveland is now in session. Anyone that has business before this board, please come forward and you will be heard.
Ted, will you open us with prayer?
Hello, it's Brady. I would do have a follow, we can't get things that's going on to us. We thank you for this privilege and we thank you for this opportunity for allowing us to come together to discuss the business of the city. We pray that everything we do and say will be in your will. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
To take our first guest, Mr.
Should be coming in now, Mr. Robinson. All right, Ryan, can you hear us?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Dominique?
Yes.
We can hear you, Ryan, go ahead.
Everybody there?
Yes, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Should he hit his video button?
Kirk, what'd you say?
You, your video, did you hit it?
Start my, there we go.
There you go.
Um, hey, thank y'all for letting me be here. First and foremost, um, I think it's one for the leadership y'all provided, I wouldn't have the opportunity to be standing here right now. Thank you. But, um, just wanted to have just one or two minutes to clarify what my, uh, plan is and, uh, my wine boutique is, um, Dominique, do you have the picture? You can share?
We all have it.
Yes, it's in you guys' drop box under the visitors folder. Should be the second item in that folder.
That visual should help a lot, um. You know, I, I think my intention is to definitely throw out anything, uh, that has to do with a package store or a liquor store downtown. I, I think I favor on y'all's side of not having any of that. But this is just a simple wine boutique inside my business that, uh, inside the building that I have now that doesn't require, uh, hardly any construction at all. Basically an extension of inventory to help, help grow, um, and make a positive impact on downtown. And the, uh, then individuals that, that visit with us.
Nice looking.
I can't see.
Questions of Ryan?
I have one.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you, uh, Ron. Is this gonna be in the existing store that you now own and, and, and are operating as, as Robinson's Jewelry and Gifts?
Yes, sir.
And, and what are your hours of operation gonna be for this part of your business?
Same, same current hours as it is now.
What are those?
It's, uh, Monday, uh, excuse me, Tuesday through Saturday, ten to five.
And what about Sunday?
As I see Mondays progress, I would like to be open on Monday. I've been closing on Mondays just because it's been super, super slow. Uh, and I use that time to work on our website and, and build him, you know, do other things in the business. Uh, but as I see Mondays grow, I'd like to open back up on Mondays.
Are you gonna serve by the drink?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
I have a question, please.
Okay.
Hey, Ryan, Danny Abraham.
Danny.
Hey, does this addition, um, fall into the same requirement as a liquor store or a package store approval from the state? Um, does your, the, the addition that you want to put, does it require the same as a liquor package store from the, from the state alcohol beverage?
No, sir, I'm working with the ABC now to try to get some more answers on that. They seem to be very loose, uh, in regards to that answer. So at this point, I don't have a hundred percent answer for you on that. But they say I, I, there's other options other than operating as a package store, buying the package store permit. Uh, that would be a state term.
But you, but you're not sure at this point?
There's different permits available, correct?
If I could, Danny, I believe he's correct, there are different kinds of permits available. I've been was texting back and forth with Ryan on that this afternoon, trying to find out what permit he's applying under. At, at this point, I just, neither he nor I have that information for you. Uh, and we had some, uh, we have some other things that, that you've got in process, uh, that are also zoning regulations that you're gonna wanna make sure are consistent with this. My suggestion is it might be premature until you know a little bit more. The photos are wonderful and, and, and it looks great, but you need to know more because if you open a door to one type of, if it's licensed under the same provision of sixty-seven, one fifty-one as a package store, then what, what else is it? But you may be able to license under something else and do something else.
I would like to suggest that we table for more information. From Ryan.
Second, uh, second.
Some more information while he's here, if I could, Mayor.
Okay.
Are you gonna sell any liquor, hard liquor, as they call it?
Yes, sir.
What about, uh, I mean, who's gonna, who are the customers that come in? I mean, the people that come into your store looking to buy gifts and jewelry or whatever, are they gonna see this? Is that's how they gonna know that you're there?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and is it a need for something, do you think, people staying at the hotel that maybe wanna buy a bottle of wine, take to their room?
Yes, sir, I believe so, uh, along with, you know, birthday gift or anniversary gift to go along with, um, you know, it's kind of an upsell type thing. You get a candle and a bottle of wine and wrap it up and be on your way.
Let the party begin.
Mayor, let me, let me say this, I, I, I've heard it and, and once again, as, uh, Paul said earlier, it's a beautiful place. It's definitely enhanced me, but at the same time, until we get to look at it a little bit further and dealt, we're gonna table in our second day's motion.
Okay, any further questions for?
I want to clarify, this is only opening when the jewelry stores are, correct, Ryan?
That's correct.
It's not like open to ten o'clock at night like liquor store.
That's correct.
That's all. And what is, what is the date we're gonna reconsider this? Cause I mean, he is in business and I think to be fair, he needs a, a reasonable time for us to respond.
I think that's based on Ryan's information back to us, correct, Danny?
Yeah, Danny, I mean, I, I first wanted to kinda run it past y'all, uh, before I started hitting ABC really hard as to which permit is needed. Cause we don't agree on it and what's the purpose in me hitting ABC hard on what permit I need?
As soon as we started talking about leisure and recreation district, one of the suggestions, I was gonna walk over across the street to, uh, you know, to, to our neighbor down here that does the framing, uh, because he's got a large space, is there are different types of permits to do different types of things that are not liquor store. And I, I think, uh, I, I, I think Ryan can explore those as well. It, it is certainly possible that you can do something that's an enhancement to downtown, you're just gonna have to be careful how you do it.
I have one more question there.
Okay, Kirk.
Uh, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, the, the, does Kroger sell wine?
No.
Danny Griffiths?
No.
They don't?
No.
I've never bought any wine in Kroger.
No. Seen bottles of wine, uh, something similar to that in Walgreens.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it's got the equivalent alcohol as beer, Kirk, it sells.
I see it in Kroger in Oxford and I, it appears to be wine, but I, I'm, I'm just not aware of what the, what, what, I've never bought any, so I don't know.
I think it's stale orange juice.
Man, could we, could we, uh, ask Ryan if it would bother him if we, the lab for two weeks and let him get the information, we're taking it in our second meeting this month?
That would be fine.
That'd be great.
Okay, motion, uh, made a second to table till the, uh, what would that be, the sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, we will get back two weeks from today, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we'll go into public hearings, Danny.
Just a second till it runs up, okay.
Let me pull in our, we have a visitor too for public hearings, Danny.
Okay, um, as always, the ones I read and call off are the ones that listed no progress. Uh, fourteen nineteen church, uh, it's listed under Tommy and Arthur, uh, no progress. Fourteen thirteen church avenue, Deborah Blockett, again, no progress. Uh, thirteen hundred West Sunflower Road, Bruce Bilgo, no progress. Uh, one eighteen Walker Street, no, that's some progress, excuse me, four oh five East Sunflower Road, Catherine Ashley, no progress. It, un, a lot, uh, five oh fourteen Red Bud, Freddie Lawrence Cross, uh, one thousand and one South Davis Avenue, Johnny Allegres, uh, four oh four High Street, Betty Jones, no progress, uh, and three sixteen Schumate, uh, which shows owned by Delta State University, uh, no progress. Uh, and, and if there's somebody here to address that from the visitors, it would certainly be appropriate for them to speak if there are, is no opposition or visitors, it would be in order for adjudication.
Okay, Mr. Ashley. Wally, can you hear me? Wally? I see Wally, but I don't know, Wally, can you hear?
Un, unmuted, Wally at the bottom left-hand corner.
Wally?
It ain't a muting issue, he's not hearing it.
Look, if y'all have somebody that shows up or wants to show up and, and we're doing during COVID, I would give that reason enough to defer that property for at least until your next meeting, if not for thirty days. It's hard enough, I believe you got Wally now.
Yeah, if he can hear, Wally?
Uh, he's connecting to the audio now.
Okay.
And Mayor, once Wally comes on, I have another question, please.
Okay, Wally, can you hear?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, can hear you, Danny, did you have a question before Wally started?
No, I have a question, uh, for Kenny after Wally or before Wally.
Wally, you got the floor.
Okay, well, I, I was called to the meeting and, uh, got a, a notice from the city. So, uh, I'm here to answer any questions that y'all got, see what's going on.
Okay, what, what was the property number, Danny?
That would still be one listed, it says Catherine M. Ashley.
Four five E Sunflower.
Four five E Sunflower.
Yeah.
What was it written up for, Kenny?
Dilapidated structure and trash. Did you hear me?
I did, I don't know if Mr. Wally did.
What's that?
He said dilapidated structure and trash.
Right, it's a, it's a, a building that's next to, to Sonic, four oh five East Sunflower Road. The, the building is secure. It's no way, you know, no entry in breast or egress out of the building going on, so it is secure. And it's not, uh, and, and been vandalized or anything, so, uh, I'm trying to, you know, see what the, uh,
What was the issue, Kenny?
Well, we've been working, uh, according to our records and Billy, we've been working on this for a couple of years and, uh, from what it seems, Miss Ashley has had uh, more than a year or two to get the building in order and I think he asked for another eight months for us to hold off on doing anything to the building.
So it's been eight months?
No, he wants an additional eight months.
I'd like a year. On, uh, to be able to have time to put something together, uh, to see what I can do with the building before, you know, I understand that, uh, talking with the city, uh, people the other day, they were wanting to tear it down.
Has it gotten to that stage?
Uh, yes, sir, Mayor, the, the building's in bad disrepair, the whole roof has collapsed and the building is separating on the rear. If you go on the sunny side, you can see the rear of the building separating and if you look up, the whole roof has collapsed inside of the building. The, the building is just standing up by the four walls, it, it, it'll take much more to repair it than it will to demolish the structure.
So it exceeds the fifty percent policy, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I would think so.
So while is it something you wanna rehab? Is it something you wanna rehab, Wally?
Uh, yes, if I can have some time, I'd like to get started back on it again. This is, you know, a very difficult time to, uh, do it, you know. Uh, you know, you're just gonna, just, I would need additional time to put some type of plan together to see what is feasible.
And Mayor, can, can we give Mr. Ashley ninety days to come back to us with a plan? And, uh, I don't think it takes that long to have a plan. How many, what, forty-five to sixty days, Gary, well, how much for a plan? I mean, a plan, we oughta have a plan in thirty days. A plan, I said a plan, Wally, not fixing it.
Let, let me, let, let me include a little something in there too, yeah, I need to, go ahead.
You go ahead, Rob.
All right, let me, let me say this, Wally, uh, Robert Sanders, you know, and I know you used to work for, you used to work for the county when I was a deputy over there and we trying our very best to make some improvements in this city, you know, a lot of harbor things, I saw it around this city, we trying to clean this stuff up. But you saying that you needed some time, you, you specified a year, that's gonna be a long time and that is Gary said for a plan. So what I do is like, see every, maybe, uh, every board meeting we have, you give community development updates, so we'll know exactly what you're doing and how, how progress is coming along.
Yes, we could, we could do that, uh, but, you know, I definitely need more time to put, put something together and also, uh, you know, to see what's gonna be the most feasible way to do it. If the building can be rehabbed back and it, and I'm sure it can be, um, I'd like to go forward that way.
Why don't we go back to Gary's suggestion, give you ninety days, come back with a plan to whether you think it can be rehabbed, Wally?
What length, what length of time?
Ninety days. I mean, come on, that gives him a chance to look at it structurally, um, whether the, uh, community development, look at it, think if we're way over fifty percent of value. Give him ninety days to get together and see what we think this thing is.
My suggestion, I think Gary was. That's okay, I thought Gary was asking for a shorter time. Well, I mean, I, I'm, I'm okay with that, I mean, but we just, we gotta, we gotta see something, we gotta see the ability to fix it. Yeah, Wally, let's go with the twenty days, is that okay, guys? And Wally, you come back to us?
How many days?
Ninety days.
Yes, sir.
And you can come back with a plan and we'll go from there, is that okay with everybody?
Is that a motion?
So move, Mayor.
Danny, are you also saying that you need to sit to look at to see if it exceeds the fifty percent rule?
Everything needs to come back to us within ninety days to stop any, any type of, uh,
What a plan.
From the city.
This is just a plan for the ninety days, it's not, just a plan.
He's gonna get with the city.
At least a plan, if you got the plan, it won't start working.
Right, and Wally, you'll get with the city and, and y'all come back to us within ninety days, okay?
Over before, yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, wait for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Kirk second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank, thank you, Wally.
Thank you. Y'all have a good evening.
Except for those that have been built with, uh,
I do have one, Danny?
Sorry.
Uh, did you, I didn't, I couldn't hear for a second, a few seconds, I got knocked out, six twelve Rosemary, uh, it's been on my list now for ten years.
Uh, don't have it on this list.
Kenny, why isn't it on there?
Uh, Billy, what is six twelve? But that one don't, it don't register.
Six twelve Rosemary was adjudicated last month, it was adjudicated last month. The, the owner is, the owner is trying to repair that, clean up around there, get the camper moved out and repair the, uh, the bond side that it came out, but yeah, it got adjudicated last month, six twelve Rosemary.
Billy, that's been, we just need to do something about that, it's terrible.
Yes, sir.
And next to it, to the, uh, west of that, Brayline Cove, all that fence is tearing, uh, coming down. Uh, and it's terrible with the litter over there and the, uh, pieces of wood on the building and Brayline Cove, all of that area, uh, that is not my ward, but I'm, people think it is and I'm getting a ton of complaints out of it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Danny, you got anything else on?
Yes, sir. You still need a motion and second to adjudicate those properties with.
Danny, make motion, Paul second, all in favor, say aye. Okay. Josh, engineering?
Guys, you, you've all got my copy of my report, I'll hit, uh, the action items tonight. Uh, we have a request for the, we are approximately ninety percent complete with that project. We have a pair for water meter replacement contract. Uh, and then our pump station projects, we have completed Tibbs Terrace and Shelby, we have requests for all three of those. Uh, the only other updates, we'll be taking bids next week on the Fiducia Park irrigation contract, irrigation and grassing. And then Arcade Alley that we awarded, I believe last meeting had started, we've already started the demolition. And that's all I have.
Okay, questions of Josh?
Hi there, Mayor.
Paul?
Josh, if we, if we started looking, I'm just, just riding around town from all of the cold weather and the ice, we've got some roads coming to pieces.
Yes, we're about to start our annual street action, uh, we do it in March every year and, uh, and then we'll be coming back to the board with a recommendation of how we suspend our street, but probably in April, mid-April, early April.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a lot of damage, I think, if there's some pieces.
Josh, Josh, there's a,
Go ahead, Morris.
Josh, there's a street that's having problem in GI Court sixteen, uh, GI Court, the street's just falling apart, if you'll take a look at that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Gary?
You know, I, I know we, we always have trouble with drainage, but I have had so many calls about the sewer system backing up. And it's always in the same place, you know, so, I mean, I, I'm not an engineer, but we've got water leaking into this sewer system. And it's, it's breaches in the system. And we have got to spend some money to find this, cause it's the same houses all the time, it's the same streets all the time. And I don't know if we gotta smoke those systems or what, Josh, but, you know, I know, I know that part of that's Keith issue, but I know he, I know he falls back on you a lot of times, so if we could just figure out a way to address that. I get a call every time it rains from the same two or three people that there's, that their sewer syst, the sewer system is backing up into their house.
Yeah, I, I, I talked to some of the same, uh, people I believe you're referring to, and I completely agree, we need to smoke test areas, worst basins in Cleveland, we're, we're about to spend a lot of money in MLK Basin and solve those issues. Worst issues we have are the Agoozie Basin and Shelby Basin.
Absolutely, right.
Got the key, you've gotta have better weather than this, you need drier ground or you just won't find any of the issues.
I, I couldn't hear him, that was some, that was a lot of noise just then.
Think everybody was gone?
Hello?
Don't hear me?
Josh, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear your last couple of sentences, there was some noise.
Yes, sir, without a doubt, the only way we're ever gonna solve these problems are smoke testing.
Right.
And we need dry ground to smoke test, we need to do it in July, ideally, a lot of the areas in the Agoozie Basin, especially all the sewers or rear easements with inside fences, we need to be able to get to them with a jetter truck and then smoke test them. Uh, I'll, I'll work with Keith, we've talked about it, uh, for a while now, we just, we need to get it done, without a doubt. So I'll get with him and if, if it's something we can't accommodate in-house, then we need to contract it out.
Yeah, and, and some of these people were contacting Jackson last week. Uh, you know, I mean, we, we were getting calls that, that we didn't care and, and we don't need, we don't, we don't need DEQ to be called for our problems. So I just wish we would really do a concentrated effort on those particular areas. And Josh, thank you for talking to me about the problem on Rosemary and Bishop, those four houses flooding coming off of that sixty or something acres out there, uh, on the field to the north. So thanks for helping working that out too, okay?
Yes, sir.
Josh, I got one question.
Okay.
Years ago, we bought our own camera system, do we still have it?
We have it, it's, uh, it's, it's really not operational though. It's about twenty-plus year old technology, it just, it's gonna cost more to get it running than it's worth at this point.
I knew, I mean, I, I didn't, it was several years ago we bought it.
That's not a surprise.
Yeah, the, we have it, it's at my office actually, we got it out, we, uh, started, we've probably used it three times. And to be honest, we've never had any successful data from it. At this point in time, you can buy a brand new camera system that, you know, the old one fits in a big covered trailer, you can buy a new camera system that runs off of your truck battery that, you know, fits in a suitcase. Accomplishes the same thing these days.
I'm with Gary, let, let's get that started.
Yeah, I think it would be a good investment though.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Josh.
Kirk, Kirk got a question.
Josh, uh, I had calls, like everyone does, with excessive flooding over in the Crispin area that runs North Crispin, commercial area, industrial area, a lot of water accumulated. Is that related, directly related to a problem with the highway crossing, the, the COVID going under the highway at Kroger intersection maybe being inadequate, is that, am I?
Yes and no, the area, the particular area you're talking about, I believe is on Industrial Parkway between Crispin and Sharp and the Robinson Electric. That water drains west, hits Sharp, goes north to Rosemary Road. Uh, the water by my office and some of the water from Highway Eight behind Shell, all of that crosses under Highway Eight. And we have had, obviously, that's a flood prone area, we have issues there. But that particular area is not in regard to the sixty-one crossing. That area, I've looked at it, I've met with, with Brian and I'm gonna get with Ray and we're gonna look about opening up, jutting some drains. But it does not flow to sixty-one, uh, in that particular cross.
And, and that, in that rain, I, Kirk, I, I got some of those same calls and I called Keith. He had two pumps that somehow or another, the power went out on them at two o'clock in the morning that night. And they didn't get them back online till eight o'clock. And when they got them online, it drained those areas pretty fast.
One follow-up question there to Josh, the, the, the Bishop Road area that runs from Highway Eight south, the big eighty acre field that's there, does not I right of way extend into that field sufficiently that we could build a burn and shut down that drainage of that field into the road? If in fact it's draining into Bishop Road, I mean, don't we have sufficient right of way there?
We have enough to build a burn, um, I think it would be a good idea as well. We have enough to build a burn, um, I think it would be a good idea as well. Now they, we need, we'd have to work with the farmer, I know a lot of the, the very back end of that field, the east end of that field wants to drain back. Uh, and it's gonna cause some operation with his agricultural practices, but, um, it does shed a little hot water to the street.
It's flooding all that area, and, um, that's where the water's coming from, isn't it?
Anything we can do to stop that, we need to do. Um, I have one last question. And, uh, I got three calls about the Valley Court Square, uh, there on eight, commercial building that the toilets were backing up. Is that the first time that's ever happened, or does that happen every time we get a bad rain?
Let me answer that. Can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Uh, that's the first time that that has happened, but it had absolutely nothing to do with our sewer system. Uh, it was all in-house. And once, when, when they first called, we were covered up with water, so we couldn't very well rod their line without blowing sewer in the buildings and everything else. But once our line went down, uh, and I reached, I contacted Roy and Chris, and told them, look, our, our system is down to normal, and, and Chris called me right back in about an hour and said, well, we still can't flush. And we took the rod truck out there this morning at about eight-thirty. He's got two clean outs on the north end of that building, kind of in the alley part, I call it. And, uh, we rodded the line out, and Roy showed up, and when I showed him what come out of their line, of course, I don't have to tell y'all.
No, don't.
Possible, possible whites. And, and Roy went right in there and told the guy at the P T Jones, I think is where it's at, and he came out there and I talked, and we showed him this pile of, of rags, and I, I, Roy just pointed like, told him, look, we, we can't have this. The pumps won't take them, and the lines won't take them, so, yeah, but we resolved this problem, and it was not the city's problem.
Right, one, one last thing I want to clarify, because Kirk brought it up again. Um, I had mentioned the corner of Bishop and Rosemary, Josh, that water wants to go and continue, uh, southwest. And we, we, it would be good if we talked about that burn, you, we've spoken about it before, but can you look into that and get back with us to see what it would, what it would take to stop that as, as soon as possible?
Regarding the burns on Bishop Road and Rondman Road?
Right. I, I'm sorry, not Bishop, uh, Rosemary and Rondman, I'm sorry. Now, where were you talking about, Kirk?
Bishop.
He, Bishop.
All right, the same, same situation with me at Rosemary and, uh, Rondman. I don't, I don't know if the burns would do any good there, uh, we talked about getting a large pipe under the road, but thanks for.
Yeah, that field got reformed and pushed all that water to that corner.
And it can't go to the bow, uh, according to Josh, so we've got to find a way to get that water off that corner.
Danny, I, I'm gonna get with you, we, I've got some ideas, there's, there's some things that we can do to dramatically improve the drainage in that area, uh, that need to happen. Um, I'm gonna get with you, and I, I'll show you kind of some of the stuff we've been, we've been looking into.
In regard to that, I know we've gotta move on, but some of these houses are building up higher than the others. Do we, I asked this question before and never got a clear answer, Kenny, do we have, uh, a, a set, uh, height that, that, that a house can build, a foundation? And our, I can't hear you, you're off.
You're muted.
You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry, I said the house actually needs to be built at the same elevation as the road, no higher.
That's not happening, some of these houses are building up six inches above the road, eight inches, ten inches.
Danny, if they built it at the same elevation as Rosemary Road, it'd flood these houses every damn time.
I know, uh, well, that's what's happening.
They, they can't build at the elevation of the road because the road's too low.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying, like, we, we have a new home over there and it's pushing water on the others, I just, I'd like to be consistent with whatever we do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank y'all. Okay, thank you, Josh, you do a heck of a job.
Thank you, Josh.
Excuse me, Mayor, we, we need a motion and second on the pay request.
I make that motion.
Okay, Kirk made the motion, Danny second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Dominique.
Real, real quick, before, I'm sorry, before we move on, I'm going to add the very specific drainage areas to my report with a more detailed explanation of solutions to fix them and kind of where we're at, to try to keep everybody on the same page, and then we just kind of keep.
Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Josh.
Okay, Danny?
You're muted.
Sorry. I did, uh, your consent agenda is before you, it needs more.
I have, I have a question, I have a, what, what, what is the sidewalk sale thing? Because it's, it's, it looks like it's for several weeks, where is this?
So this is just for the downtown merchants, this is a request coming from the Chamber. And so it was pretty successful when they did it, um, and the Mardi Gras parade, so they just wanted to do it March and April.
Is this on Saturdays, uh, Dominique, is that what it said?
Yes, sir, just weekend, so just Saturday.
Okay, I just, I didn't, I, I wasn't clear on that.
Okay.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Paul, Danny, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oh, planning commission, Kenny?
Uh, there's not a, an update from the planning commission, we did not meet this month. Uh, so, uh, you guys have my monthly report and my construction report, so that's all I have for this month.
Questions of Kenny?
I wanna say, Kenny, keep doing the work you're doing, and we'll see a lot of improvement.
Thank you.
Okay. Lisa, Lisa with us?
You skipped the city attorney.
Oh, well. I thought we were done.
You have my report.
Okay.
And you have one there from Jamie, and she's right down the hall.
Okay, Buster?
Yeah, y'all have my report for this month, uh, there's nothing else to add unless y'all have any questions.
Questions of Buster?
Have you, uh, filled those two spots, officers?
Uh, we're in the hiring process right now, uh, we had a, uh, had it, it actually slated for the week of the ice, and we had to move it to the very next week, and then we had all the storms that came in, and we had to put the, um, physical aspect, train, uh, qualification part of it off, we'll be doing that tomorrow. So hopefully by the time that we meet, uh, again this month, I'll have some candidates for you.
So you're short two, Buster?
Uh, actually, we're short three.
How's that affecting your, um?
Right now, it's not affecting it that bad, uh, we're able to, uh, move some people around or whatever else, but we're trying to get these other ones hired as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Greg?
Buster.
Oh, excuse me, Ted.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to, Mr. Buster, the, uh, the visibility of the police department, uh, on, uh, Pearl Allo and Church Street, been very helpful the last two or three weeks, uh, some, in that area, we haven't had, you know, as much of this shooting. And I think that, uh, the reason for that is, is the visibility of the police riding in that area more, and I'd like to thank them for doing that.
We're trying to.
I imagine five degrees after a little bit, too.
We're trying to keep as many people in that area as, as possible right now, Mr. Campbell.
Good. Greg?
Uh, we, uh, made it through the ice and all that, okay, not a lot of issues. Uh, the only thing that I have to make y'all aware, we're doing our training this month, March the sixteenth in town. So we invite anybody that, that can to come by and see, to be in the vacant lot where the Twin Center used to be. It's actually sponsored by the Mississippi State Fire Academy, and, uh, there'll be a, um, a actual propane burn out there. Uh, it's very safe, um, the Fire Academy will be there to oversee that as well. Um, and we, we feel like it's really important that the citizens of Cleveland see their fire department at work, and who's there, equipment that you provided and all of that, it's just a good opportunity to be able to P R for, uh, you know, what the city has, who they have, and, and what we can provide. And it's also pretty spectacular to see, so we invite you to come out and see that, everyone. But, uh, we're also out of City Hall, uh, we're, we're completely out next door, so if y'all wanna walk next door, uh, in City Hall, the offices and utilize, uh, as you see fit. Um, we're completely cleaned up and out of there, I asked Ms. Dominique if we could get our deposit back, she didn't comment on that. But, but we're out of there, um, and we're also out of number four station over by the E O C. And, uh, we'd like the possibility of, uh, looking into letting the police department have that for a service bay, uh, for them. We've moved everything into the old number one station, and, uh, it's been a little bit of a chore, but, uh, we are complete, so, uh, that's about all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you, Gary?
Uh, since, since everything is out of that building now, you know, at one time, we talked about expanding our boardroom and taking in that area. Uh, Josh could, could, uh, I mean, can we maybe get Josh or somebody to look at it to see what it would cost for us to expand that boardroom? Because our, our boardroom is way too small, and now we, we can go all the way to the end of that building now if we could.
I totally, totally agree.
Josh, you hear that?
He may be gone.
Yes, sir, I, I did, let me, uh, I've actually looked at this before, uh, let me get with one of our, uh, local contractors, I think I've actually had Cleveland Lumber look into this before, let me get with him, and we'll come back with the budget price.
Yeah, it, it'd be a long-range plan, but it's something we need to think about now that, now that the building's available.
The boardroom needs the room.
Definitely.
Been the same size for the last thirty years.
I think there's a safe here out, if I'm not mistaken, uh.
There are two. One big one.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Greg, you through?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go to, uh, Jamie.
Y'all have my monthly report, um, I do wanna note that we met with the, um, with the, the shelter, everybody that's building the shelter, sorry, spicy today. And they said we should start construction on the addition aspect in about two weeks.
Fabulous.
Right.
And we're very excited.
Looking forward to it.
Okay, Keith?
Oh, folks, uh, I turned in my report, and I've only got one thing, I got a pretty alarming uh, letter from Park Office who contributes, backed up with chlorine. And, uh, chlorine looks like it's got a real scary future, uh, with the federal regulations constantly getting worse and worse, and I don't think there's a lot of money being made in chlorine, but our vendor just advised us today, after fifteenth of this month, availability of chlorine is gonna be real iffy and impossible. Can't operate a water system without chlorine, so option we have, if we can't find a vendor, and there's not many other, is to convert from chlorine to bleach, and I'm gonna be getting with Josh here in the next couple of days, because there's a lot of engineering. Yeah, and it's, it, it won't be a real, real expensive project, but it's, it's something that'll have to be put on a drawing board, a lot of calculations made, and, uh, I'm just gonna let y'all be aware of it. So bleach first of all, the bleach is so much safer to handle and to use, uh, it, it's a world of difference, chlorine is a deadly catch, but, uh, I'll be getting back with y'all, but I'll be hooking up with Josh, we'll be watching, seeing what they, in bleaching a place for, inevitably, chlorine's gonna be a long item for too long. And that, that's all I've got, in fact, that the cave-in on Court Street, as bad as it looks, it was a blessing, because we've been looking for that leak for twenty-four hours, and we were steady losing water pressure until we found it, and when the street fell in, there it was, and if the street had not caved in, I don't know that we wouldn't still be, because the water was going, it's on draining, going in the flooded bow, we had no way of detecting that, but, uh, fell in, that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, Kirk?
I wanna compliment Keith and his staff, we began to get calls in our area, uh, losing water pressure, and uh, his folks were there, I think it was Friday night, it was at night, it was cold, and they worked until about nine or ten o'clock that night, found it, and then next morning they were back at work, uh, Ray Bell's people, the police, they were all a team working together, and I just really wanna thank them and their, their concern and, and their way they responded to this really a crisis, could have been for the whole city. And, uh, just wanna, the, the people in my area really appreciate the hard work they did.
No doubt.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Okay, Ray Bell?
One thing for Keith.
Oh, okay, Maurice?
Uh, Keith, at, at six-ten G I Court, y'all, y'all did some work there on a round of sewer, and it's eroding, if you can take a look at that, that six-ten G I Court.
Took a look at it this morning, let me pause the problem, Maurice, we did a little work there, but it, it's not what's causing the problem. The lady, I'll take the picture and send you, the lady has got her mailbox set back about seven or eight, ten feet off the street. And the, the people delivering mail are literally having to drive through the edge of her yard to get to the mailbox. And that's what's cutting the ruts and, and rutting the yard, that, that, her mailbox needs to be moved out about six or eight feet to the street. And, uh, I'm gonna address her on that, and, you know, you may get another call back, but if you go by there and look at it, you'll think exactly what I'm talking about, her mailbox is way up in the yard, and the mailman's just cutting through the edge of the yard, and it's, it's, it's rutting it up, something terrible, uh.
Keith, would that be part of the problem that's breaking the street off? The pavement off?
Yeah, yeah, he, he's riding the edge of that street, you can hardly even see the edge of the street for, for the damage that's been done, and, you know, he's doing it on a daily basis, it doesn't matter if it's wet or dry.
Okay.
He can move, I'll box six or eight, uh, the problem, so if you'll go by there and look at it, you'll, you'll understand what I'm trying to tell you.
Yeah, I saw that yesterday, and I'll go back and talk to her too, see if I can get her to move it. Okay.
Okay. All right, Mike, Ray Bell?
Good evening, uh, you all have my report, and, uh, everything was in it, y'all have something for me.
Questions of Ray Bell? Okay, Clint?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, I've only got one thing tonight, real quick, I've got one pay request for Barge, and it's on our, uh, paint rehab project.
So move.
Gary made the motion?
Okay.
All second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, anything else with Clint, Jason?
Uh, the only thing I have outside my report, I do have it on my report though, is, uh, the gate at Bearpin Park on the east entrance, uh, I'm meeting with Delta Security in the morning, they're gonna show me how to program everything. So starting this Friday, that gate will start opening at five o'clock in the morning, and it will start closing, at park closing at eight o'clock.
Do we have a turnaround there?
We have a turnaround there, uh, we have all our signage, all our lights are up as well, so, so we're ready to go.
Good job.
Jason, when is, when is your next, uh, part committed be?
Uh, March tenth. Uh, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, uh, Dominique?
Yes, good evening, uh, we have the Waste Pro renewal up for discussion, I brought it up two weeks ago at our last meeting, whether or not you guys wanna exercise the two-year additional option with them, or if you wanted us to rebid it.
When, when does their option expire?
Uh, so the new term would start in October.
Can, can we investigate this, you know, I, I know they were down during all that ice, but, and, and they were late picking up garbage when that next week started. But I saw garbage on the street that Friday that never got picked up that whole weekend. And even to, even mine, I even finally brought mine in Sunday morning, I got tired of seeing it sit out on the street. So, I, you know, I don't know what they did after that first day, but they're, they're just not, I don't know, they, they don't seem to be wanting to cooperate.
I agree with Gary, this problem didn't just start during the ice storm, they've been, service has been poor for a long time.
Well, the thing about it, there was a whole lot of people in this city that were working and there was no reason for those trucks couldn't run there at the start.
I agree, Paul.
They had those, uh, uh, there are plenty of people out working, going to work. But all of a sudden, those big heavy trucks, they weren't, they weren't going to slide.
I mean, Ray Bell's crew worked every day. And, you know.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I don't want to delay it any further. I'd rather rebid it.
Okay.
I second that. Was that a motion?
It's a motion.
Okay, Danny made a motion.
I second it.
Okay, Gary second. All in favor say aye? Okay.
And the reason why we ask so far in advance is because if in fact we rebid it and then Waste Pro doesn't get the bid, potentially it takes like 90 days essentially to have a new operation set up. So, um, so we'll get started on that. And then also our, our mosquito control contract is up this year as well. You guys have already extended or exercised that option two years ago. So it's up this year as well.
When, when?
I thought we extended it.
She said we did. When is the new, when, when does this one expire?
In October.
Okay.
So it basically falls in line with our next fiscal year. So we'll just rebid it this spring and then it going to fall. Um, the next thing I have, you know, with the winter weather, I'm sure you guys get calls about pipes bursting. Um, and so we want to be able, right now with our current leak adjustment policy, you can only get one leak adjustment per 12 months. And so we're wanting you guys to waive that to allow for essentially if they had a leak that covered multiple billing periods to allow an additional leak adjustment.
I make a motion.
Second.
Gary made a motion. Maury second. All in favor say aye?
Uh.
Okay.
The only other thing I have is we recently signed up for a new program that will, we can basically auto dial some of our water customers who potentially are on the cusp of being disconnected. Um, potentially have a leak, um, that we can see from our water meter system. And so we've just enrolled in that. And so we'll be making our first kind of round of calls probably next week. So if you get calls about, hey, why is the city calling me? Um, that's what it is. So we're trying to cut down on the number of people that we're having to potentially disconnect by giving them that courtesy call, um, before it happens. So.
Good job.
That's all I have.
Uh, Dominique, did you, was the letter for Bob Williford in, in there about the?
He's, he's going to come before the special events committee on Monday.
Okay. All right, that sounds great.
One question, Mayor. Uh, oh, we're going to executive session. I have a question on, uh, the Siemens, just some financial information. I was just interested in, we'll talk, you know, talk about that. Dominic, with you during the executive session?
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. Thank you.
I want to clarify, Mayor, we are, we, we are going in to rebid for the garbage control.
Uh huh.
Now, explain what you said about the mosquito. We're, we go through October and we have no more extensions at that point. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, so we will rebid it this year as well.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Hella?
Good evening. Um, I only have the employee action recommendations tonight. I have two for your approval with the airport unless you have any questions.
Questions of Hella?
Some move.
Second.
Motion, uh, Gary, I mean, Robert, second, Gary, all in favor say aye?
Uh huh.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Robert?
I don't have anything.
Sure? Danny?
I just want to say, I think we have one of the best cities, absolutely in Mississippi, if not the South, with board, the mayor, and every department head we have. It's unbelievable how people communicate and work together. And it is, is, it's really a joy to, I know we all go through a lot, but it's a joy when it works right. And thank you to everyone through this inclement weather, the weather and everything else which has happened. Um, I won't, I won't, uh, I don't know if Jamie's still here or not, but, um, behalf of the animal shelter, I want to thank, uh, Dollar General and, um, Tractor Supply. They gave us a ton of, of food and, uh, treats for our animals during the inclement weather. So if you get a chance to thank them, uh, Jamie, are you sending out a thank you letter?
We do. We posted on, we post them on Facebook too. Um, and Dollar General does this about once a month for us. Um, they had canceled it because they found out the shelters were selling the dog food, but they, they made an exemption for us because they knew we were doing it right.
Thank you. And Mayor, thank, thanks to everyone. Appreciate it.
Mayor, can you, I just like, can you defer back to me?
Man, I knew, I knew it's too good to be true. Don't hit it, Robert.
You lied on the air.
Well, look, I, I do want to ask one quick question. I, I saw it today, I saw today where Governor Reeves has, uh, lifted the mask mandate for Mississippi.
That's supposed to be at five o'clock tomorrow. Yeah.
Tomorrow, okay. My que- my question is, is that, and I'm sure some of the general public is wanting to know as well, will we be going back inside the boardroom? Uh, wh- when will that happen?
We, we, we'll be talking about it. It's lifted tomorrow at, uh, five, and we're not going to meet tomorrow. So, uh, you know, it's just now happening. So.
Okay.
It's back to nobody asking. A hundred percent to whatever. We're going to do as we've done, everything the governor's saying. That, that's going to be our new mandate.
They say.
I think we.
Well, at the same time though, Mayor, it needs to be expressed that the governor's mandate does not, he cannot overrule a small business saying, you're going to wear a mask in my building if you come in.
Certainly. And, and I think.
That needs to be understood, put out there because there are a lot of folks that are upset.
Absolutely. That's, that's my question. All right.
They, they don't have to let anybody in, they.
No, no, I, I agree. Paul, and, and the stores that have the mask signs, signs still up, I think you need to be respectful of that. And, um, hopefully we don't have any problems from it. But I, I think people, they're putting their own monies in their stores and stuff. They have the right to, to do what they want to do with.
What amazes me is just Mississippi and Texas did it.
Yeah. Is that right?
Yeah, Texas did it too.
Right.
Did it first.
Good, good point, Robert. Okay. Uh, Ted, uh, Maury, do we have Maury?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I got something, Mayor.
Okay, Maury?
Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Ray Bell and his crew. They did an outstanding job, especially in my ward. They'll be, to be commended. And I would like to ha- add to the, uh, executive session if we can get an update on, uh, the Jackson litigation. So we can look about tearing those buildings down.
Got it.
Okay. All right. Gary?
Uh, one thing, I, I, I just want our board to really be aware that, uh, this drainage issue, issue we complain about is, is going to require some money. And we're really going to have to look at it during budget session. Cause the only way Josh and Keith are going to be able to do their job is we got to give them the resources to do it. And, and this is something that's plagued us for a long time. The only other thing I want to mention is this, Dominique and I have talked to a company, I'm not even sure where they're from. Because we need to do some long range planning for the city to look at our revenue and our debt structure going forward. So that we don't wind up like some of the cities around the country that are struggling with their tax base to survive. And, uh, we're, we're going to try to continue to find a group that can come in here and help us do that.
Good.
Like it.
Like it. Okay, Kurt?
No, sir. I made my comments earlier. Thank you though.
Okay. Paul?
Uh, one question and I'm, I'm not trying to put this on Gary or Dominique, but is it worth for us to look at our bonds that we have out there with these rates right now and look at the possibility of refinancing? I mean, if it's saving us 1% or whatever, I know it costs money to reissue and do whatever. But I, I think it's something we, it's worth us looking forward that we can refinance maybe some of these older bonds that, that are at higher rates. And we could save two or three on some of them maybe. I don't know. I have to go read through all our rates over the last two years, but they're a lot higher than where we are now.
Yeah, Paul, that's a great point. And the, the company we've actually talked to is, has made that recommendation. And they, they reviewed all our bonds and, uh, they, they figured they could save us, was it about $50,000?
Give or take. Yes, sir.
Yeah, about $50,000 a year. If we could get them, if we could, the ball, the bonds that were callable that we could go on and, and, and pay those off and reissue bonds to replace them, it would reduce our debt cost about 50 grand a year.
Good job.
That's a lot of money.
Okay.
One, one thought, one thought too is Brad Davis, actually, I need to send y'all a packet. And we can talk about it at the next meeting if you'd like. But we had talked about potentially during our next bond process, doing that at the same time. Um, doing the refinancing and our 2022 bond issue at the same time, just because he felt like the rates probably aren't going to change um, fast anytime soon. Um, but they did already kind of prepare a packet for us that I can send you guys to look at.
Okay. All right.
The only other thing I would suggest that needs to be considered is with these rates is low, I know we can't stand so much bond debt, what we can do. But as we, we're talking about these sewer problems and some of this other stuff, we're never going to get money this cheap again. We'd all love to get grants, but who knows when we'll ever see the grants. And maybe something in this 1.9 trillion dollars, that figure's just too big for my brain to think about. But, uh, maybe there's gonna be some money in there for some cities and states, but you know, we've heard our governor say that he thinks it's ridiculous. It shouldn't be any because everybody should be prepared like the state is. The state is sitting on a bunch of money, but they're not giving us any of it. Uh, I, I, but I think this is something that maybe at this time that we look at and see if before these rates go back up, we could tie in some money that we've got problems that gotta be fixed. And it's, we're never going to have rates this low again. For why? My opinion. That's my.
Yeah, I agree.
Being the economist that I am.
Right.
Mayor, could I ask one additional item to this bond discussion and investigation about how municipalities can use bonding, uh, the ability to bond and assist in the development of new additions and streets and things like that. There's some really nice opportunities now that have come into line in the last several years. And I think Brad Davis has got that information. So as we go forward to August, I'd like some, some discussion about that.
Right.
Uh, because I think it, bond rates are low and it's an opportunity for, for the city to wherever anybody wants to develop. Uh, to provide that, that platform that might, uh, make it more feasible long-term to, to make the, develop that property.
Right. Okay, uh, I guess April, our April meeting will be election day. Do we want to keep the meeting at 6:30 or would you like to move it to seven? I, I don't know. I think only one race will be that day.
Two races that day?
Two. Oh yeah, correct.
Yeah, uh, or if y'all wanted to go that morning or midday. Um, cause I know we will be tallying after six for sure, after seven, seven to seven are the polls.
What about back to meeting up a week?
Well, we've got the third, that third Tuesday, we're going to be meeting anyway, unless y'all just wanted to meet once in April.
Well, we, we need to meet because you have bills to pay.
Yeah.
So why don't we just, can we just not move?
Would 8:30 be okay? Would that work for everybody? Would it be better?
Is that AM or PM, Mayor?
Huh, I go to bed at PM. So it's AM.
How about just bang it up a week?
I thought they just talked about that because of the bills.
Just for the payment of our bills, you know, being due that first week.
What about the next day?
Wednesday?
Just do it the next morning, that Wednesday morning.
The Wednesday morning, the seventh at 8:30?
Yeah, that way we, we, because we just got to make sure Dominique and them can get their bills paid.
Yes, and they're going to be tied up after that, that night. So.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Next morning at 8:30?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion on that, Danny?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay, Gary? Danny, all in favor say aye?
Uh huh.
Okay.
What's that date? Tell me again.
Look, Dominique, I think it would be Wednesday the seventh.
Yes, April 7th at 8:30 AM.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Kirk?
All right, I'm, Mayor, I make a motion considering entering into executive session, some personnel issue. And litigation involving the Siemens case and the Jackson case.
Kirk made a motion? Okay. Uh, Paul second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
I make a motion we entering executive session for those three reasons.
Kirk made a motion?
Second.
Gary second, all in favor say aye?